I have signed the notification along with the appropriate city council members. This time, council, I would call for any complex of interest, any complex of interest you think need to be disclosed regarding anything on your agenda. I see none, so we'll move on to our active agenda. And start our agenda with public comments. If you'd like to comment, please step up to the podium here and state your name. And if you're resident of North Ogden City, we will be giving comments this evening to five minutes. So if you would reconsider it and do that, I appreciate it. So at this point in time, John, if you would watch for anyone online, if you'd like to comment, let us know. Just kind of raise your hand and John will notice that online. So we'll now go ahead with public comments.
My name is Doug Anderson. A resident of North Ogden City. Thank you for giving me the minutes here. I want to report. All from what I said last Tuesday. I've got names and then four members of five people who stepped up last Tuesday. And we haven't really formed a committee, but I did follow Councilmember Swanson's advice to get what John called pursue how I'm going to do this. And I realized, I think, I gotta tell you about a tale. After having reviewed Q and As. A couple of letters from former city councilman. Kind of a 10,000-foot review of the 33-page budget. And I freely admit that I'm not done. Just barely scratching the surface. But I am scratching the surface and a lot of which I know all of you have seen requesting that you postpone the decision until next week. Because we're not done. And even after next week. When we go through with this citizens committee, first of all, not done. I'm not going to wash our hands and walk away, you know? There's still work to be done and I recognize that and I'm willing to put out some time to do that. I also realize that you folks have been elected to do this job. And what makes me think I can do any better job looking at the budget and coming through it, agonizing over it, what makes me think I can do any better job than you have already done and will continue to do? So in a way, I'm questioning myself. But I think that further improvement can be done. I know that last week you said you would do somewhere looking to see what other committees you could do and I'm anxious to hear about that. But I will tell you that I have a vision of what this can be. I think I want us to see each other as allies in this effort, not adversaries. That's the spirit that I want to process as. So I'm on your side, I realize, kind of like Pogo said in the comic strip years ago, we have met the enemy, it is us. We have met the council and it is us. We are all in this boat, as you said last week. I live here too, you know? I'm willing to help, I'm willing to spend some time. My vision is that the city operates within established budgets, how am I doing on time?
Two more minutes, thank you.
The city operates within established budgets and is conscientious, conservative and careful with citizens' money. Spending it on things that are necessary. And nice things only the funds allow. The city council and employees use good judgment on what is nice and necessary and design the budget and taxation plan accordingly. This probably sounds like this is nothing new, Doug. We already tried to do that. The city representatives and employees continuously look for ways to economize without sacrificing safety or quality of service. And the city representatives listen to input from citizens and act accordingly. That's the vision statement that I wrote last week. And our mission as a citizens committee, if you will, is to explore and recommend to the city council options for additional cost savings, which can be reasonably implemented again without sacrificing safety or quality. To communicate these measures, whether they're implemented or not, to the general citizen group of North Ogden. And thirdly, to follow through, to be sure they are actually done as agreed to. That's my vision and mission statement, subject to critique. But I realize that none of us has all the answers. But I am willing to help. And so I would encourage you to I don't know if you're planning on saying, okay, we're going to back down to the was it John, I call it level C budget if the citizens wanted, you know, what we desired last week? Or if it's the 20, was it 24, 29% one, 24% one? Or some hybrid in between, I don't know where you end up. For the Q and As, meeting that Mr. Buzzwell invited us to last week, which is why I'm standing up quickly so I can get this to you and then I will leave you. Obviously, you'll make your decision. Trust and hope and pray that you will, as we all want, make the best decision. And then when I'm done. I'm willing to commit next Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday is our anniversary. I'm not going to do any command, but I can work Saturday with you. So one of you will talk with me. See what we can figure out or anytime Monday. And to me, it's not a yes or no thing, it's a how, how we can do this. We can figure this out. Thank you very much. Thank you, Doug.
Anyone else like to comment?
We do have one online, Brenda Ashdown, and we do have a new speaker, so let's hope it works.
Okay, let's go.
Oh. Hey there, Brenda. Let me try again, Brenda. I don't see anything showing up her signal that she's there we go.
Hi, Brenda Ashdown, I live in North Ogden. Are you hearing me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. I appreciate that this man came to the meeting last week and that he came today and that he's willing to get a committee together to look at the budget. My advice to him or anyone else that is concerned about the budget is that had they been coming to the city council meetings from at least January on, the budget has been discussed many, many times. And this committee would have, I think, a fairly good understanding of why the budget is where it's at. I'm not saying don't listen to him and don't work with him, but I'm just saying, you know, I'm glad that they're stepping up now, but I kind of feel like it's a little bit too late. I realize that the budget has to be accepted in a certain amount of time and cannot, can, I believe it's by the end of this month, it can't keep getting put off, maybe if there's, I don't know, that's just my opinion. I think I've been to the meetings, I've listened to the meetings, I have a pretty good understanding of why you have chosen to do with the budget what you have done. I may not necessarily agree with all of it, but I do understand it. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Anyone else here to see who would like to comment? Someone else online?
No.
All right, we will then move on to item number four. We will have Bryce Nelson, our most data services manager, treasurer, talk to us about action for consideration of an investment policy.
Good evening, council. Looking to get approval for a temporary acceptance of extending our banking agreement with Wells Fargo to encompass investments. This would be to, you know, we're going to do an RFP process, but we don't want to miss out on opportunity to use the funds we have now to hopefully start our portfolio and grow it. And we would like to take advantage of that. Wells Fargo has the services and is willing to help us with that while we go through the RFP process and select advisor. Wells Fargo would act as a broker for it. So what that means is we would have to tell them what things we are purchasing, which me and the mayor sat down and discussed. And we're looking at treasury notes, which is very specific. We would hold them till maturity. Well, Fargo, the state of Utah makes us go through a broker to do that. We can't go, can't do it ourselves, as we've learned. So if we approve this, we're able to start this right away rather than waiting to go through the RFP process. So.
Bryce, I believe Wells Fargo is already our approved financial institution. So this is basically an extension of the agreement.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, I should have specified that.
We're only talking about buying the US Treasury bills, which are guaranteed by the US government. Rates are pretty good versus what we're getting from the state, like nearly double, as I recall?
Yeah, because I think our, when we looked at it last, we were getting less than a percentage of a percent on the money we have in our public treasuries. And if we go with the treasury notes, it's up over 2%. So the rate of return is quite a bit better.
I think the last time I looked at six-month treasury bill, it was over 3%.
Oh, yeah.
So this is something that could so really
And accepting this doesn't, I mean, we're still going to do the RFP process and everything. We just want to kind of get going on a little faster so that we can hopefully get a good understanding of it before next fiscal year comes around.
Councilmember Swanson. Is this a fee-based or a commission-type structure?
So it would be a commission. Talking with Wells Fargo as a broker, they don't give you a specific amount. But talking with the broker, he did say it would be a couple basis points off of the whole amount. So the basis point is like, it's a hundredth of a percent. So he said, as, since it's just an extension of our banking agreement, they're not looking to make revenue off of it. So they would just collect a smaller fee. And once we go through the RFP process and select the advisor, we would have a, you know, set amount. But I've been told it would only be a couple basis points. And as far as brokers go, they don't really give you a guaranteed locked-in rate. But it's pretty low considering the gain that is to be had. Thank you.
And we're talking about starting out four or five million, as I recall.
Yes.
In US treasuries, so they're all risk.
Yeah.
Two, they're two times over. Any questions for Bryce?
Questions? Jamie? Do we have an estimation on how much more this will gain for the city or is that too early to ask?
It depends on the rate we can lock in, but you know, if we're looking at 2% of, you know, 4 million.
50,000.
Yeah.
10,000 to go with 5,000.
So.
Is it, so it's
Did you have a comment?
So it'd be like a $40,000 increase, right? Over that six month, or not six months, but if that was annualized over the year. One thing I would like to mention for the audience as well as the council is just, there are very specific rules on what cities can invest in. US Treasury bars or bonds are one of those we can invest in. And the financial advisors that would respond to our RFP have to be approved by the state to even respond to our RFP. So the state is very cautious with what municipalities are allowed to do. So all of the steps that will be happening in the future are, they're in a very small range of what we're allowed to do, which is part of the reason our return, rate of return is not super great because the state wants us to be basically risk-free. So.
So no Bitcoin, no Dodge Call?
No.
I mean, John, I do have to say, if we're earning 1%, and we earn three, which is the six-month rate, that's 2% on 5 millions, $100,000 increment.
Correct, yeah.
Just wanted to point that out.
Every six months?
You had, okay. So, you know, goes mostly to the general fund, of course, it'd be allocated based upon the fund that's making the investment. So any other questions for Bryce? All right, and I would look for a motion to approve request by Mr. Nelson to allow Wells Fargo to be our investment vehicle for US treasuries on an interim basis till we get the RFP to build our investment portfolio.
Mayor, I move that we accept Wells Fargo as our interim broker for investments until we have the RFP.
Yeah, you have a second to that motion, second? Second by Councilmember Delpes, is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Passage unanimously, thank you, Bryce.
Thank you, council.
Councilmember? Bryce? Bryce has had a brand baby, how's her?
Yes, Henry's doing great. Mom and baby are doing good, so.
Perfect. All right, we'll now move on to item number five. This will be led by Jamie Jones, our finance director. This will be a discussion or actually consider an ordinance adopting the final budget and tax rate. It's going to be 2022, 2022. This would be addressing the council obstacle on this of the ordinance 2022-20. Jamie?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So easy peasy, we did a public hearing on June 14th and had a treaty on taxation hearing on August 9th. And so we have some changes since the tentative, so items for consideration since then. Is raising this, the, sorry, raising the property tax rate about 24 and a half percent, which includes increasing revenues, 431,000. The tentative did have a 7% plus growth included. And so that's why the amount that we're raising on property tax revenue is about 320,000 from the tentative. We're also increasing sales tax revenues about 100,000 and adjusting for contribution from the Northview Senior Center for 12,000. And then we have increased expenditures about 95,000 and personnel-related costs make up 100,000 of that. Sales tax bond about 200,000. And then we reduced capital projects transfer about 200,000. So all in all, we're ending with a $10.3 million general fund budget. No other changes have been made to the capital projects fund or any of the enterprise funds since the tentative.
Jamie, can I just clarify, on the sales tax, we say we've increased it 100,000. Basically, what we found is that our sales tax collections this year were 100,000 more than we thought. So we're not estimating we're going to collect more sales tax next year, is that correct?
Yes, thank you for that, correct.
Which I think is prudent. Some cities have opted to avoid the sales tax, I mean, the property tax increase by estimating a 10 or 15% increase in sales tax. Our investigation indicates that's a little aggressive. State deals were going to probably be entering into a soft recession. Sales tax would be flat to slightly up. There's, I think we're already seeing a decline in major purchases of big-ticket items. So when we talk about 100,000 increase, that was just from the original budget to get to what we think we're actually going to collect this year.
Correct, thank you.
Anything else?
That's all I have at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Swanson being our council member over finances. I'd like to, I guess, see if there's any questions before we start into a motion or any comments you'd like to make.
I have no questions or comments beyond what we stated last week.
I know I saw an email go out from you asking each council member, again, if they had any adjustments in the budget they've scrutinized heavily before. I didn't see any responses on that. Okay. And Doug, I would say we very appreciate your willingness to help. I think my feeling is that I'm more than happy to support the council, whatever their decision is. I don't know what we can accomplish in a week, it's very complicated. I've actually had some thoughts about maybe having a subcommittee of the audit committee led by Mr. Winmay, who's the independent member of that committee here, him staying. And having them coordinate that effort with Mr. Anderson, because I think it is good to get input. I just don't know what one week's going to accomplish because it is extremely complicated. It's been, I think, an eight-month process, so. And Councilmember Swanson.
Regarding the committee, I think because it is a it's a committee that will assist with probably the most important job we do as a council, that it needs to be a formal committee where, as we discussed after the meeting last week, where notes are taken, minutes and all of those kinds of things. In order for that kind of a committee to be established, names have to be submitted to the mayor, who then has to get approval from council. We approve, the earliest that we could do that would be next week. And so it would be after Tuesday that the committee could actually start meeting. And that would give you one week in order to try to digest what we've done in the last eight months and ask questions and try to come to, you know, to for explanations to be given for every question that will come, because undoubtedly there will be many. And that's what we would be counting on you to do. There just isn't time between now and the state mandated deadline of August 31st that we have to have this budget passed. However, I am recommending to council that we do form the committee. And that we have it formed well in advance of our January start in the next budget. So the committee members, understanding you can't come to every, every every council meeting, every budget session, you know, it would be impossible. It'd be great if everybody could make everyone, but understanding that human nature and busy schedules, you can't make everyone. But you'd be involved with the process right from the very beginning and spend eight months with us going through and lending us that advice in your eyes on the budget, I think that'll be a very helpful thing in our coming budget. And we're from August, September, October, November, December, we're four months away from starting the next budget cycle, the next process. And we have this committee established and ready to roll, you're in it right from the very beginning. I think you'll be an invaluable asset to us, absolutely. I just don't think there's time for it to be effective thorough enough in the week that we would have by the time we had to pass the budget.
Phil, I, that's why I was thinking you could expand the audit committee, to have this as a subcommittee there, because it's already formulated.
As long as it's formal, because dealing with city finances, we've got to have record of everything that's not existed.
So that is a formal committee that we have minutes, app notification. We have two members of the community who could help Doug in leading this effort. And I would even suggest that they, they start immediately and they could follow through this year's budget to get an understanding of how things flow and maybe see some things, if we missed anything, that would be prepared and ready to go.
Yeah.
For the budget. So I think there's a mechanism we can do this without actually creating a whole another committee and have it led by a member of the community. I know you chair the audit committee. We have two citizens and I would suggest that some committee be led by one of those under your direction.
And I think Randy, if he'll accept it, would be great. We already know that he's a fierce watchdog of the budget.
Yeah.
So you'd have another ally there on that committee.
Okay. Any other items before I seek a motion to adopt the final budget and tax rate for fiscal year 2223? Councilmember Exton?
Okay, I mean, I've just kind of had a week to kind of process kind of the feedback that we've gotten. I just kind of wanted to explain, I don't know, my perspective a little bit. Um, you know, I come in as a business owner, I was not like politician. I came with, you know, my particular package of strength and weaknesses to add to the council. But to me, and you know, the mayor and I actually kind of differ on opinions on about this. But to me, property taxes, especially the way property taxes have been assessed and collected in the city, has, has kind of moved us out of an economic efficiency of spending. Our property taxes are North Ogden's money being spent in North Ogden. And when we move to sales taxes, that moves down a level of efficiency to other people's money being spent on us and our money being spent on other people. And it's just not as specific. To me, like, the property, if you own property in North Ogden, we have met, we have made an ordinance so that all of the property tax that we collect in North Ogden is, goes to public safety. And we've just done that by ordinance. So to me, that makes sense. I mean, that was just a logical, makes sense to me. Because if you own property in North Ogden, one of the responsibilities of property ownership is to protect it. You know, protect who's here, protect, you know, everything about it. You know, that's just my view, I'm not saying I'm right. And I'm certainly open to something else, but it's certainly not the police department's fault that, you know, we'd be raising property taxes. It's just, you know, the sales tax is very difficult to predict. We don't assess it, we don't collect it and we don't distribute it. And so it's kind of like, well, what's the state going to give us? You know, and so to me, to have public safety, something that's really, really important, contingent on what the state may or may not give us, just doesn't feel right to me. And again, I'm just trying to explain, give some color to, you know, my perspective on this. We do get a lot of criticism of sort of wants versus needs and things like that. But, you know, I kind of have to, to put a plug in, I guess, I always like to do for our Parks and Rec Department. You know, we've, we've just spent two years in isolation essentially. And I think we've kind of forgotten how to like get along with each other. So, you know, I, you can argue the merits of, you know, one event or something for another, but please don't, let's, you know, cut the legs off our department that is really designed to help us come together as a community. And that's the intention for it, it's not to entertain everybody, it's not, you know, it really is to make connections in, in the community. So having said that, that's just kind of Charlotte's perspective, so thanks for listening.
Thank you, Councilmember Exton. You know, as I stated last week, that's the only mechanism we have, basically. The fund of sales tax and our risk profile. It wasn't too long ago that we were 50% sales tax and 50% property tax funded. We are now 66% sales tax funded, 33% property tax funded. I still believe property tax is one of the most unfair taxes that exists, but it's there and we have to deal with it. I did have a chance to talk with Ricky Hatch and John Bond last week. One of the things that is highly unusual, that's causing all this burden to be placed upon residential is commercial. Is commercial assessments did not increase anywhere near our residential did. So now you have a bigger shift of property tax onto residents versus commercial. Which has been highly unusual. But that's, that's one of the things that's really putting more burden on the. Probably said city. Okay.
I'll also just reiterate to homeowners, challenge your value. I, I have spoken with. Well, thirteen, fourteen residents across the city and we've looked at their home values. And they're overvalued. Especially considering where the market is today versus where it was on January one, when the assessments took place. So we've got till September fifteenth to challenge our values and encourage everyone to go out and challenge your values. Mine's going to drop. Substantially, more than six figures. My home was overvalued. Which will make a pretty substantial difference in my tax bill across all taxing entities. When combined, it'll make a difference in yours as well, so. Certainly take advantage of that and it's a way for us to let the, through the, the. Clerk Auditor's Office, let the assessor know that the valuations were incorrect or inappropriate. And that's our mechanism, so do it. We've got till, you've got a month. To get the information in and get that submitted, so highly encourage you to do that.
Which is good, short term. Let me just remind what the state does. As they say, here's your rate to collect the same dollars you collected. So it's dollars, not rate to spend, so ultimately. It kind of is like an elevator, I guess, so to speak, but. Okay, any other comments, council? Before us on the agenda this evening is ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty. Which is an ordinance adopting the final budget and tax rate for fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three. See no more comments, do we have a motion, Mayor? Councilmember Barker?
We, we heard from Doug today, we got an email, I spoke with Clay. And I let you all know I'm going to move that we postpone this decision for one more week till Blake gives back. That's my motion.
Okay, we have a second to that motion, second. Have a second to the motion. All in favor of the motion to delay approving the budget till next week? We'll do a roll call vote here. Councilmember Exton?
No.
Councilmember Dowpas?
Yes.
Councilmember Swanson?
No.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Motion passes on three to one. Yes, on the, oh, yes, on the motion, you were yes, I'm sorry.
It's two and two.
Mayor votes to pass it. To approve the budget this evening.
So, do you have to vote?
I'm in all. That's the motion.
You have to do a new motion to pass it now, someone else?
To approve this evening as presented by Jamie Jones according to ordinance twenty-two dash twenty. So, so moved by councilmember Swanson?
Second.
Sent by councilmember Exton. The motion is to approve the budget this evening. Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
You're approving the budget this evening. Councilmember Swanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowpas?
Yes.
Councilmember Exton?
Yes.
So the council votes unanimously to approve the budget. Councilmember Dowpas?
I just wanted to explain my vote. I, I do think it would have been nice to hear from Councilman Severing and. Know exactly what his vote was, so that was my reasoning for delay. I didn't want to delay, but that was the reasoning.
Now that we voted, next Tuesday's Northview Fire's truth in taxation meeting, so if we would have delayed it a week, I would have been gone and Blake would have been here. So.
Perfect.
But I was trying to get out of a vote.
Well.
Thanks for being honest.
I was trying.
Let's move on to item number six, this would be an action to recess the city council meeting. And convene the redevelopment agency known as the RDA. Do we have a motion during the meeting, convene the RDA? Councilmember Swanson? Got a second to that motion?
Second.
A second to adjourn into the RDA. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll now move on to item number seven on our agenda. Which is a discussion on our action to consider an ordinance adopting the final budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three on the RDA budget. We're now committee members, city council members, so Jamie, would you proceed with? The RDA budget, and this is regarding the RDA ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-one, is that correct, Susan?
My genesis. Yeah, twenty-one, yeah.
Okay, Jamie?
Hey, Mayor, we, Chairman, we, we passed a tentative on May tenth for the RDA and the CDA budget. Remvenues are about approximately one million fifteen thousand. This includes a transfer from the general fund. For the WFRC grant for the North Ogden Plaza project of a hundred thousand dollars, and we have expenditures. City rebranding efforts of fifty thousand, just re-tapping here. The North Ogden Plaza project, like I mentioned, from the WFRC for a hundred thousand. And then transfer to general fund to support watering the flowers and another. Project for the amount of twenty-six thousand. Transfer to the aquatic center if needed of a hundred and eighty thousand, and then a CDA. Fund balance reserve of the five thousand dollar balance deficit. So really, there are no changes to be made since the tentative.
Can I just clarify, my understanding is that, is it John ten thousand with the cities putting up and. The WFRC is ninety thousand? I mean, we're not taking a hundred thousand dollars of taxpayer money, it came.
No, that is the grant, that is the hundred percent grant.
So, yeah, I was trying to clarify, that's a grant.
Correct, yes.
It's not taxpayer money.
Right.
Which is all taxpayer money, and it comes from somewhere, just not out of our property sales tax.
It, it's us recouping taxpayer money that went to the state, is probably the right way to look at it.
Okay. Then, this is. As I recall, the flowers used to be. The operating costs of flowers used to come out of the general fund, we're making them pay it back to the general fund that the RDA.
Transferring from RDA to general fund.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Councilmember Swanson?
I'm still not understanding the purpose of rebranding.
Call, did you have a comment?
My, my experience with rebranding in various companies with whom I've been associated. The only people that benefit from the rebranding are the people who help consult for rebranding.
So the, this is coming from the Economic Development Committee.
Right.
Like, what we told them when, when we originally put this on the budget was. That this would not be allowed to be spent because it still has to be approved by. Jamie, myself, or the, or all three of us really, because of the amount of money. And they still need to report back to the council on what they plan to do with it. They had planned to do that in July, but some, a family tragedy didn't make that possible. So if you wanted to remove that from the budget. And then have it come back as an amendment, that would be fine. But it, it won't be spent until they come and talk to this group and get approval anyways, so. Either way.
So it's kind of contingent?
Yes, it's a.
It'd come back to council for approval and for you, Jamie, and Mayor as well.
Yes.
Okay.
Counselor, RDA twenty-seven?
RDA board?
RDA, yeah. Okay, is there any other questions? Councilmember Barker, please.
I had a question with the flowers. We got that email, Susan forwarded it to us. It says part of the money still comes from the general fund.
Last year's budget, I think.
It is last year's budget. Can you remember? Can you remember that amount?
It's the one that you sent in the grammar question, I was responding to them because they got a message.
I want to say it was like five thousand.
It was, yeah, it's like five or seven thousand.
Five thousand.
We were under the impression that everything was being transferred from the RDA. Or I would.
I think that was the impression is that the general fund would not expend any money on the flowers.
So I think that that was, that was, I don't know if that was for twenty-one or for twenty-two.
There was done in both years.
Okay.
But it's another looking for it.
But it might be a fiscal year, it might have been a twenty-twenty-two expenditure, but a twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
And that's because the wages come out of parks, right? Okay. So if I, so if anything, it would be about five thousand.
I've got it here. In twenty-twenty-one. General fund total is seventy-seven thirty. Year-to-date, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-one, twenty-two is four thousand thirty-five. And it's for. In this year, twenty-two hundred thirty for salaries, nine ninety-four for fuel. Four hundred sixteen for vehicle maintenance, three ninety-four for fertilizer.
So this eleven thousand is transferred to the general fund and support. We're actually purchasing the flowers and everything else is coming out of the RDA. So essentially, the RDA is covering it. So this, so the eleven thousand is being transferred to general fund to cover those wages.
Okay.
Where the flowers are coming out of the RDA. Which I think the flowers is right around nine or ten thousand, maybe not quite that.
Flowers, seventy-five, seventy-five, yeah.
Is some money coming in?
Some money coming in.
Okay. I just, yeah.
It appears that way, but we're transferring them.
Councilmember Barker, or Mayor, have questions? I would look for the board to make a motion to approve the RDA twenty-two. Budget. This is ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-one, we have a motion to approve the RDA budget.
Mayor, I'll move that we approve ordinance RDA twenty-two dash twenty-one. Approving the RDA budget as discussed.
Board member Swanson? You have a second to that motion?
Second.
I'm second, will you roll call vote then? Councilmember Dowpas?
Yes.
Councilmember Swanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Exton?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. I would now be looking for a motion to adjourn the RDA meeting and convene, reconvene the city council.
So moved.
Board member Exton? You have a second?
Second.
A second by board member Dowpas, any further discussion? All in favor of reconvening the city council meeting, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We'll now move on to item number nine. Which allows for further quality comments. Anyone who would like to comment? At this point in time, regarding anything on your mind? Just a little bit forward, give us your name, or your resident of North Ogden, and please leave with your comments in five minutes.
Justin Scott, resident of North Ogden, and I spoke last week along with everybody else. I'm kind of surprised to see not more people showed up. As you can tell, I'm not a regular attendee, you probably haven't seen my face yet, but I did come last week and. And I really appreciate you opening up that, that hearing, but. Just so I'm clear, like, what, what happened? You, you passed the, the budget, right? So what exactly? What percentage are we at now then?
Twenty-four point five.
Twenty-four, okay. So we were looking at, what, forty-three, forty-four?
Forty-one.
Forty-one. I just want to say, I mean, it's, you know, it's a lot better than what we thought it was going to be, and, and you guys had to have some. Skin of iron after last week's meeting, my goodness, you know, some of those comments. But thank you for hearing all those remarks. I, I left that meeting thinking, well, we'll see what happens, you know, and I really didn't. I, I didn't know, I didn't know how to heart you guys would take all those comments from everybody, I just really appreciate you. Looking at the budget and. Cutting it back like you did, you know, my, my personal tax bill, I would have spent. Eighty dollars extra a month just for the privilege of living in North Ogden, so. It's nice to know that's come back. But, but that, as for challenging the values, so as I mentioned last week, I remember we'll say broker with global banker. Of the properties I own, I'm only able to do an adjustment on one of them because. The assessor's kind of catching up to, you know, from years past, our market increases, although. As I did mention last week too, we are seeing a rapid decline in our home prices. In fact, just this morning at our sales meeting. We talked about the number of canceled contracts, price adjustments. I mean, Ogden, Utah, this North Ogden, Utah metro was one of the top of the nation for rapidly decreasing home prices, so this is. The adjustment to the budget, you know, is very much appreciated. For me, and I'm sure for many others too, so just wanted to thank you all for that.
And Justin, I would just point out too, you're, you're paying taxes for the privilege of living in Weaver County.
Absolutely, I do recognize that, I do recognize, that, I know, especially the schools, yes, which my kids don't go to.
And I just want to say, you know, we do appreciate the citizens that did come, and, you know, I wasn't surprised that. No one stood up and. Encouraged us to raise taxes. I do understand that, but I think as this citizens committee's formed. And you'll see, you know. We paid attention, we paid attention to the comments that came there. Once again, I don't want to pound this thing to death. But two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars of this budget increase. Is to catch up on an incorrect accounting procedure that was used in the city. That drained our.
Resident.
Water pool. Reserve. That's, that's two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars of the increase. And I don't think it was done. You know, illegally, it was just probably lack of knowledge and effort not to increase taxes, but. You know, it's like I say, as the water goes down, and late meat, the dead bodies come up. And that's kind of what we're facing here is, as the water goes down because people have money because of inflation. We're seeing ramifications of that in our city, so. Okay.
Well, thank you, Justin. Thank you very much, yeah, appreciate it.
Andy Cochran, I live in North Ogden. You didn't ask for it, but I'm going to share my opinion about. Forming a citizen committee with somebody who couldn't even sit through one. City council meeting, if I were all of you, I think I would reconsider that.
Anyone else see? John, you want to like?
No.
Now's time, if you'd like to comment. Hey, I see none. We'll now go to comments. Let's start with staff. Jamie, or John, or Susan, any? Anything we need to be aware of, that citizens that you'd like to discuss?
So, Music Mondays again next Monday. I, I think I told you before, council, we haven't had a lot of people attend, but music has been really good. You can sing along with them and it's been fun, and the weather is perfect, although next week I'd probably suggest a jacket. Stay till the end because it does start to dip off depending on which way the wind's blowing. And then, we, I just watch Facebook for pictures, I know some of her will attend the Benny's boat race, but that. That was a fun event, lots of energy. Residents had the fastest boat this year, and Park's boat was second. But it was a lot of fun, I was able to attend, so.
The judges were a little bit shady. Yeah, it's up to me, Councilmember Barker, myself, but.
I, I really wanted to see that hamster wheel do well, and it, it fell miserably, but the idea was so cool.
It's a good idea, but how that good idea works? All right, council, any comments you have?
I just have one thing.
Susan?
Um, so next week we'll be holding a joint work session with Planning Commission. Scott has just put together a training at six o'clock. We'll have Ben Schbecker, the vice president of Piper Samler, talk about. Financing methods for public improvements. So that'll be the first hour from six to seven, and then we'll have a regular scheduled meeting.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Council? Councilmember Exton?
I, I really, it isn't because I like to hear myself talk, although it probably seems like that, but I just want to thank the people that show up. I mean, thanks, Steph, thanks, Andy, thanks for coming. I mean, you know, these other committees that, that. You know, they. You have credibility with me because you show up. You know, you know what we're going through. I might not agree with, you know, and I have a difference of agreement, but I know you're informed and I know that you've. Taken the time to come. I mean, you show up and you help. I mean, Steph, you were, uh, you know, doing cotton candy with us for what, two and a half hours, three hours? You know, it's like, you want to help North Ogden, show up, you know? I kind of like this, you know, it's like, well, you know, we, we want to help North Ogden, but we want to just advise you of how to do it. You know, sort of like the, the little red hen kind of a thing where it's like, not I, not I, well, I, but I'm, I'm gonna tell the little red hen how I can do it better. You know, and not that to say that I don't want people involved. It's like, yes, please come, do something. But, um, yeah, I do really appreciate. People that, that come and, and help. You know, it's, that's. That means a lot because it takes sacrifice to come and actually listen to all of the, you know, the. Agonizing and debating and going back and forth that we have to do because it's not, not easy. And I really appreciate when somebody comes and offers a different perspective. You know, I, it's like, we've got the five of us, we have our perspectives, but, you know, you come and it's like, okay, well, you live in a different part of the city. What's it like for you? You know, I really, really appreciate that, and I like it when you come, not after the decision's made, but during the process. You know, that's when it's helpful, you know, and once we've gone through all of it and then, you know, okay, now we're, now we're to the final thing. Well. It's like coming into the end credit scene and saying you don't like the movie. Well. So anyway, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, um, this last couple of weeks, we've been hearing a lot about recreation, and I met with Becca yesterday. Um, so North Ogden is the only. I get this right, we're the only city that sponsors flag or tackle football for all of Weber High School District or boundaries. And so that means Pleasant View, Harrisville, the Upper Valley, they all come here and play. And it's roughly North Ogden contributes half the people and the other entities all make a better half. Becca told me that, yes, it is expensive, but our equipment lasts over eight years, and we recoup all the money that we put into the equipment over those eight years. So we are not sponsoring other cities to come play football. They're actually paying their fair way, and. Also, not that it's a comparison, but my kids are playing flag football and Pleasant View sponsoring it. So they're actually going to be playing in Pleasant View. It's forty five dollars, what tackle football is in the five, six hundred dollar, I think, range. Am I correct? How much? Oh, one twenty five? I thought it was more than that. And my kids play, it seemed like a lot of money. So there is a price difference, but we do recoup our money over the eight years, so.
We don't cover the year bills.
What happened, Councilmember Barker, your son told him about six hundred, he bought it.
Uh, I think.
What should I buy?
There's still other equipment you have to buy.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? All right. I would be looking then, uh. For a discussion on the motion to enter into a closed meeting. For reasons related to state code fifty two dash four, S two oh five one A, regarding the character of professional competence or physical mental health of an individual. Uh, do we have a motion to enter into a closed meeting?
Mayor, I motion that we enter into a closed meeting for reasons related to Utah code fifty two dash four, dash two oh five one A. Regarding the character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual.
Okay. Second. And second to that by councilmember Swanson. Any further discussion? All in favor of entering into a closed meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously unanimously. Uh, we would ask, uh, those in the audience to. Thank you for being with us this evening.
We're grateful for your regular turn.